At that point she said.
We'll get started. Welcome to the Davis County Council Meeting. We will start as always. First on the agenda is special meeting minutes. We have four separate meeting minutes that we will approve separately. One is from the airport, the other three budget related. Hopefully you had a time to look at them. Any additions or corrections? There was one spelling, but I was told spelling didn't matter, so we'll let that mileage. Ergo.
I would move to approve the Davis County Special Meeting Minutes from August 9th, 2023.
Motion by Tom.
That was seconded.
Second by Matt. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Also, it won't run out. There's lots of meetings, lots of signatures when we're done. Next is the regular meeting minutes from August the 9th.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 9th meeting.
First motion by Matt. Second by Tom. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Likewise, meeting minutes, the two-day budget work session on September 6th, September 7th.
We approve those minutes.
You what?
I move we approve those minutes.
Motion by Darren to approve. Second by Marilyn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
I abstain as I was out of state and unable to attend those two days.
Next on the budget adoption, there are five things that was changed from the when we adopted. First, there were assessment. The computer equipment expense was decreased by $2,500. Assessors office, they failed to put in their budget for their people to get 4% and we did 4%, so that was caught by the auditors.
Tony, we still have nine minutes from the 13th to approve, don't we?
On 9/13?
Yeah. I want to vote on those I was actually here.
That's fine. I turned it over. I even checked it.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Motion by Mike Myers.
Second.
Second Darren, all in favor, aye? Now I'm good, right? First reassessment on the four, reassessment, computer equipment. Next on the assessors department, they did not put in 4% for their pay. On the sheriff's department, on the deputy, we had, chief deputy, we had picked a number rather than the 4% plus the thousand and we rounded it up to the 65 number. Same thing with Scott's adjustment, the 4% was left off, so we put that 4% on, on Scott's error. Prosecutor's office, we did the 4% plus the $700 for the six individuals in the office for that staff. So. Slow down here, see if we've missed anything. Corrections, additions? No, you don't think of anything or it wouldn't be here. Anyone else? Not making a motion to approve the adjustments.
Move to approve.
Move by Tom.
Second.
Second by Matt. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Revised longevity pay policy. Put that one ahead of this one. At least that was when we voted early on to give the elected officials.
Correct, and that was to add those in. This is just the paperwork Prosecutor Murray has completed and got the paperwork now before you guys, just to get it finalized.
And in the budget. We already adopted before, we have to vote on it again. Alright.
And just formalize, I read through it, it looks like as discussed, so I can make a motion to approve.
Motion by Matt. Second by Marilyn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. On this budget adoption. Did we just sign that? There's nothing I. Yeah. Next is the mileage adjustment, which the adjustment didn't adjust, it's the same as last year, which is?
New numbers for 2023, and I verified again this morning, there's no new numbers out there by the state. So this is still the scale that the state used as of last year. So it's just, we typically during budget season, go ahead and determine what you guys want to do for setting us our rate for mileage for reimbursement for 2024.
What is it presently?
Forty-three cents currently.
I would say we just leave it alone.
It looks like it's right in the range that it should be.
Got a motion, Mike?
That's a motion.
Motion by Mike Sprinkle. Second by Darren. All in favor, aye?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Alan, Eleanor, budget adoption. We'll let you two speak. First of all, to let everybody know, with your firefighters, you can't adopt it yourself because they're on the board and they can't vote. And also, you're going to talk about grievance with the DLGF, so floor is yours.
Okay. We have, we did our budget, we had our hearing. There were some people, or one lady, did not think that we did it properly, so she filed a complaint with public access against two of our board members. We have sent the response to them, but we have not heard back from them as of today. So we're just waiting for that. I've been working with the budget department and she seems to think everything's in order. We also had a petition against our budget because they thought we were spending too much and they're trying to get the tax rates down. So now we're just waiting to see what happens with the public access and then with you guys, whether or not you pass our budget or not. And then we're just gonna go with whatever happens. As it's starting to get a little late in the year, and if it doesn't pass, then we'll just have to deal with it next year.
This is my fault. Go ahead and state your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry, Heather Davis, who's town of Eleanor.
And Jerry Beck's one of the current town board members there, also here.
Does anybody have any questions?
Jerry, do you have any comments or?
Not really, I mean. I feel like this now.
Yeah.
So I mean, I would rather leave it.
Any questions for Heather? What we had to advise our county attorneys out of town, we had been advised is to approve it as is because we're not able to go in and just strike blind items or change numbers. We either approve it or deny it. So our recommendation from our county attorney is to prove it and for the simple reason that you just stated. You will have different board members and additional board members that you don't have to spend what's approved. But also, the other side is if you don't prove anything, then come January 1st, you're in a bind as well. So, under the advice of our council, that's what we were asked to do.
They're looking around the room. I don't see anybody out there that I don't know. So I'm assuming that the people that are opposed to what you're proposing to spend are not here. Okay. They could have been here to.
Yeah, they could have been, and we told them multiple times when today's meeting was, so.
It was publicly advertised.
Yeah.
I've known it, it's been here for months. They could have been here.
Yeah, so they could have been here, but they just like to cause trouble.
They did appear before the commissioners yesterday at their meeting.
They did.
And weren't they told to be here today?
I personally was not present, but, and I have not specifically personally talked to them, but I do know they were here in attendance yesterday.
Okay. Talking to council commissioners after that, it stated that that was not the meeting, that this was the meeting telling them to be here, but this was the meeting that would make the decision. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that.
So in that respect, I make the motion to approve and to, we want to decline, alright, because there's two.
We need two different motions. We need to do something with the petition and we need to make a motion toward the budget.
So I'll make the motion to approve the budget and we'll do the other one after that.
First by Matt, second by Tom. All in favor to approve the Eleanor's budget as presented? Say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
We have to do the petition now.
We just need a motion to decline the petition. I will make that motion.
Second by Marilyn to decline the petition.
Second.
Second by Mike Myers. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Very 6-0.
Thanks for being here today.
Next up, boater safety education grant, $7,200 tariff. Pretty.
That's the boater safety grant that we get from the Department of Resources. It's how we pay our deputies to work at Bogs in the summer and maintain our boats.
Would move to approve.
Move by Mike Sprinkle to approve.
Second.
Second by Darren. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next up, Sally Ordance Amendment, local emergency planning.
I can kind of speak on this one a little bit. He typically was contracting those types of services out. But the person that they are doing that with now is already a county employee, so we have to move this into a wage line and get this taken care of through there. So it's kind of not really a complete contract, so through the W-2 IRS rules, we cannot pay an employee two different ways, so we have to keep it all within. So we're moving it to the wage line instead of the contractual service line.
Same amount of money.
Same amount of money, correct.
Alright, make motion to approve.
Motion by Matt to approve.
Second.
Second by Mike Sprinkle. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Our Orleans for the overtime at West Bogs. The situation is there, two of their administrative people are no longer employed there, non-taxpayers money. So moving this money to pay for the overtime because those who are there are working more. Those are the two that are gone. Move to approve. I missed, I wasn't looking.
Mike Myers.
I'll second it.
Approved by Mike Myers, second by Tom. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Sally Ordance Clerk Perpetuation Fund. This is, we're scanning all the books, part-time help for scanning, and we'll see scanners here in a little bit, are the ones they're wearing out, so.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Mike Sprinkle.
Second.
Second by Matt Meredith. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next up, economic development agreement. We've talked about this and talked about this before. This is for Strongbox and Westgate, nothing new. We just have to approve it. We've discussed it many times. So, approve it and I'll sign it, we'll be done.
Move to approve the Westgate Agreement with Strongbox.
Motion by Darren. Second by Marilyn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Vanessa Phillips, IRS End of the Year Report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I had sent in, excuse me, Vanessa Phillips, Director of the IRS Program over in the Davis County Jail. I had sent in a report for our year ending, wanted to keep everyone updated. I also presented to the county commissioners earlier this month on our year end of the project for year one. We have been funded for an additional year. Year two started in July 1st, sorry, excuse me, and we were able to receive an additional $100,000 to support our program. So that's an additional financial support. Again, all of our services that we provide within the security center are free to the individuals that are incarcerated and then anyone that leaves the security center, we follow them for a period of time as long as they're willing to engage in our program. The sheriff also received an additional financial support for year two to help with any costs associated with the program as well. We're working on a sustainability plan with the state for our program through a billing mechanism. And that has to be sorted out, but the intention is that this program is here to stay. Additional sites have been funded. Fayette County is going to launch here in a couple weeks. We're looking at sites in Vanderburgh County as well as Monroe County. So the success of the data that we were able to obtain in year one at our site and the additional four sites was able to show the state our efficacy, not only reducing the recidivism rate by connecting someone with resources and peer supports upon leaving the jail, but also by receiving services and support while incarcerated. I would remind everyone that we have five staff, including myself. We provide individual peer support while they're incarcerated. Matrix Programming, which is an evidence-based group that works through substance use and mental health discussions as well as reentry support planning. And then we provide a support group as well. And I didn't know if anyone had any questions in regards to the year end report or any questions about the program specifically, but I wanted to make sure I followed up, given and gave you all an update.
How many people are we actually working with? How many is in the program?
So the census of the jail hovers around 150 on average. I would say approximately around 100 people are actively engaging at any given time. Now that changes based on, you know, if someone comes in and bonds out. Everyone that comes into the security center receives a packet of information upon intake of explaining our programming, offering them the program. And then when they leave the security center, so if they come in and bond out within an hour, right? They're leaving with a packet full of resources, our contact information, our community peers' team information. And then our reentry peer attempts to contact them multiple times after release, even though they never had that face-to-face interaction with them to try to help engage with them. And so that's, we've had some positive success with that as well. So we also capture those numbers. I don't have those numbers today. But we've had success with that as well. But those that are staying incarcerated for a longer period of time, we have about, on average, 100 individuals actively engaged.
Thank you.
And I believe Carrie and Steve are fond of the program. Questions for Vanessa?
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Next up is the Merrells Westgate Holdings abatement that has been on here for several months. At our meeting a month and a half ago, we said we would go up there, so we took a Friday afternoon and Tom and I drove up there and cruised around and find their building and knocked on the door and gentleman come to the door and had no clue what we was talking about. But he said he had a boss that would call and I will admit that Monday morning, I had an email and a phone call. And I sent him over to these young ladies and he had paperwork filled out the next day, so even though there wasn't very many people working up there the day we were.
Sure didn't look like it.
At any rate, they did what they're supposed to do and you can read the numbers, so had we not scooped around and knocked on doors, probably wouldn't have got this, but.
Well, thanks for your effort.
It was a pretty day, that's why.
But you got out of the office for a little while.
Got out of the bag. Just need to approve.
I'll move, make the motion that we approve.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Mike Sprinkle. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next up is the Mayville Properties. This was on the agenda a couple, a month ago and had it taken off the agenda off the agenda because we had a couple of questions. Everyone has had those questions answered, so Tom's talked to Logan, several people, so for a motion to approve.
I make that motion.
Motion by Matt. Second by Tom. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next, the general revenue bonds. Here's 23 of the ordinances, documents, timetables. It does have to be approved though.
Based off of the last email I got in regards to the information from the Indiana Bond Bank, it sounded like Grant basically said nothing had to take place today. The timetable was being bumped back due to the timetable of everything being bumped and money's not needing to be available now till first of December. And then Grant can be here at the next meeting to further go into detail for any questions.
I'll make a motion to table until the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Obviously I don't vote, but I would have to abstain anyway. Same with the next thing. Next is the.
That is the Indiana Bond Bank?
Yep. Indiana Bond Bank, so that's the same thing. Table that.
I think there's any action.
Make another motion for that.
Sure.
I'll make another motion to table that till the next meeting as well for the Indiana Bond Bank.
Second.
Second by Mike. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Everyone here, during this whole process, since my place of employment is involved in these things, Tom and Matt have been the lead and I have been in no discussions nor will continue to be in any discussions. That was a no-brainer, but that was also per Grant's request. Next up, cabinetry. For skip care patients. You're good. Nope. Cabinetry. Eleanor is.
At the conference. I don't think that's something we really have to do yet, do we?
I'm not sure where that got left. I know she's been working with the commissioners. A location in the basement has been identified to my understanding. She has been working specifically with Mr. Arnold with trying to figure out a final landing spot for her books for once the courthouse renovations are complete. I think the final consensus was to get them a final, a permanent home within the basement here. So the idea was to potentially have cabinetry looked at and started and keep them there so they're not being moved constantly and they're easily accessible for her to be able to get to if need be. So.
I know she had a bid, but that was before they knew what the location, they're removable, foldable. My recommendation would be to table until they decide exactly where it's going and if this even works. Agreed. So we will need a motion on that.
I'll move that postponed it now.
Move to table and postpone by Tom.
Second.
Second by Marilyn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Official appropriations. First off, county general. Care patients. This is $53,500. This is not the jail. This is for in the commissioner's budget, and I know we squeeze budgets, but when we get to the year end, this is for the youth that we have at the Southwest Regional. This is for transportation, medical. Sometimes when we get to the end, depending on how many individual youth are in there, it gets, we can run out of money. Running about 20,000 a month, somewhere in that neighborhood. And as the judge can say, or Gary can say, they cannot be in the same facility, in the same areas. Despite not wanting to spend this money.
Motion. I do have a question. That was up for sale, is it not, that facility?
It's my understanding that it is for sale. They had some issues over there, I believe, last year when they shut it down for a while. That's run by CCC and I can't think of the name of it right now. But it's a private corporation or a private prison company. They also run one in Newcastle. This one, I believe, is up for sale and I think the deal fell through, but somebody else may be looking at it. And once that facility closes, I don't, they're not going to turn it back into a juvenile jail, I don't think. So we'll be having to transport these folks to Johnson and Vigo.
So these expenses are more.
Well, I paid for the transportation out of my budget. That's just paying for the services at the youth village.
Thank you.
But depending on what happens there, if you're going to Indy, Johnson County.
Yeah, we've taken them to Indy, we've taken them to Johnson, we've taken them to Vigo. Had to go to Florida and pick up two and take them to Johnson, so.
I would move we approve this.
Okay. Motion approved by Mike Sprinkle. Second by Darren. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We'll do the next two together. This is, we talked about the clerk scanning. This is the scanning project. Sorry for the part-time people, Social Security and to get a additional scanner that one is worn out and Dale is taking care of that. Picture of the lovely desk scanner there if you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Matt to approve. Second by Marilyn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next, we're gonna have one, two, three, four, five items from the airport. Erica will talk about the fuel. I think we, I can talk about the other ones.
Erica Burkember, Davis County Airport Manager. Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, I'm back asking for fuel. So 60,000, again, I'm still figuring out the fuel purchase, so this'll, I do have a outstanding, two outstanding invoices for double L fuel right now, so that'll pay these and then probably have about 30,000 left in the budget after that purchase, so, after that payment.
And as we discussed when we had a meeting several months ago, looking at the prices of the other airports, increasing ours a little bit to offset some of that.
Yep. Soon as I'm back up and going from the construction, we're gonna take a look at the fuel rates again and raise them a little bit, so. I hate doing it right now with construction going on. I, we actually still are selling. We've had some helicopters come in, so it's been good, but once, once construction's done, we'll gear back up.
Is there a certain margin you look for when you're?
I, like when I'm purchasing or like the price of fuel or?
When we're selling, the money we're making on the fuel.
I don't, honestly don't know yet. Give me a year, I'll see where we're at. And then even then, this year is so abnormal because we were shut down, so I can only tell you what was sold last year or the previous years.
But we're not losing money on it.
No, no, yeah, no, we're not losing. We always, there's a 50 cent profit off of double L and a dollar 50 off of Jet A right now.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, yeah, we always make a profit off of it. And even right now with construction, we're still making those profits.
And then that money goes back to the general fund.
Explain to me again.
When you open back up in about three weeks.
Fingers crossed.
Yes. All the pilots, all the companies are gonna know that you've got the new extended runway.
They will, so then, well, I have to issue what's called a NOTAM. And it's a, a notice to airmen, letting them know that my airport is my runway. My paved north-south 1836 is shut down. My grass is still open, and believe it or not, the grasses saw a lot of action lately. Um, but my jets, GPC is called about every other week and they're already scheduled to come in at the beginning of November once we open back up, so they're ready.
But, but how, how, you?
You say, you do a flight plan. And if your flight plan has you landing at Davies County, it'll pop up that there's a NOTAM there and you can't do it. A lot of guys, I've had two or three calls, are you still shut down? Yeah, we're still shut down.
Are you asking about how will they know of the?
Yeah, how do they know we got a larger runway?
How's a pilot gonna know? They actually, there, there's some places that already publish that information and we're like, we're not even open yet, correct?
Yeah, they've already extended it in the, on their websites.
Yeah, so there's a lot of places it's already feeding out based on the engineering.
The FAA, it's my understanding the FAA did a publication middle of September, beginning of September, that already showed the increase. And so guys are already, um, one from, I believe it was Nevada, called and he thought we were open already and I said, no, not until middle of October. And he's gonna try to use it as a stop, as a charter stop. So.
The fed, the feds have already put it out there that it's extended. I, I didn't understand the process of how a, a pilot's gonna know that, hey, we can land at Washington now because their runway is longer, so.
The FAA and Facebook, that's all I got.
They know Facebook. And, and what will happen is a lot of the apps that they use for flight planning
Yeah.
will automatically, uh, update their databases and then it'll be included in those metrics.
Right, yeah. It's, it's, we're getting there.
Good.
We're getting there.
Thank you.
So like I said, I, will 60,000 do? I honestly, I can't tell you guys, I might be back in November, who knows?
I hope you are.
I hope I am too, that, that would be great.
Yeah.
But.
I'll make a motion to approve the fuel.
Okay, what we're gonna do.
You wanna do all of them?
We're gonna do the aviation by itself and then we'll do the rest of them together.
Okay.
Cause she has fuel and their other ones are specific, so.
Yeah.
We'll do the aviation fuel and the runway, the 300,000 is coming out of their budget.
Right.
Which, all of these numbers were, have been discussed for multiple meetings, but nonetheless, we'll make this official. Well, the first motion will be on their fuel and the runway extension of 300,000 from the aviation budget, pay for the runway.
So moved.
So moved by Matt.
I'll second.
Second by Mike Sprinkle, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Now we'll do 250,000 that's coming from Edit to go to the runway. The 503,568 dollars and three cents, which will wipe out the 2016 list. 300,000 from the rainy day and 120,432 even from Riverboat, which will make the 1.4261, whatever it is, 1.4. So, uh, we'll do those all together.
So moved.
So moved by Mike Sprinkle.
Second.
Second by Mike Myers, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did go out there the other day and I was gonna look. There were some people out there and I was afraid to cross, to go down there, since you weren't there, so I just looked from, from afar. Uh, West Boggs overtime, we did that, but we did not do the building repair.
And we're gonna appropriate it.
This is on the overtime and the building repair, non-taxpayers money, that was due to the hail damage to their roof. Wanted to ask the insurance question, but
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that may be the spread of the difference.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Darren.
Second.
Second by Matt, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Kathy? You wanna talk about tuberculosis?
Good morning.
So we've had the tuberculosis clinic going for over a year now, um, and we're actually starting to see revenue from it. So, um, this is to put it in the specific line item so that it doesn't get worked up with anything else going on.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Mike.
Second.
Second by Matt, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up's clerk from the registration fee to the travel mileage lodging of $665. That's what's left in the account to get it moved over before year.
You move this over for the AIC, the conference.
AIC conference going on now.
So moved.
So moved by Matt. Second by Tom, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Next up, county general from group health insurance consulting services to cover the appraisals for the salt building project.
Move to approve.
Moved, approved by Mike Myers.
Second.
Second by Marilyn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Likewise EMS, contract services, $2,500. Budget funds from services to fund salary 1101 to make contractor funds payable as a salary.
Thank you, I'll make a motion to approve the appropriation.
Second.
First by Matt, second by Tom, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motor vehicles, utilities to supply for the office 365 renewal. Off where, $1,637.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Darren.
Second.
Second by Mike Sprinkle, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Security center, we're gonna do these four together. This is remo, taking the remaining ARPA money.
Yeah. Jen and Josh are at their end of the, ARPA.
Almost done, I guess.
We gotta move some stuff. Apparently, my medical wasn't, uh, fully funded under the ARPA part, so. We're trying to move stuff around to get that paid out of ARPA funds. Is that right, Jen?
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is being able to clean up and not have pennies left. We're trying to get it all expended in this year, which was the goal of the beginning. So, I've been working with Josh and trying to figure out what these bills and trying to just get the transfers in the line so we can get this, so there's not pennies left over into next year.
Are you on schedule, look good?
We've, we've been waiting to kind of have our budgets to finally just sit down and actually sit together and look things over, but through some communication over the phone so far, this is the starts of all this, yeah.
There's still, it's, I think it's still a long road to go.
Oh, is that right?
But we should be, we should be fine. We just gotta, we're gonna get a plan.
Well, have the time to get the plan. Questions for Gary? Or Jen?
I move to approve.
Moved to approve by Tom.
Second.
Second by Marilyn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Thanks.
Oil and water, transfer of funds, $861.20 for mileage to office supplies to purchase a new printer.
I make motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mike Sprinkle, second Darren, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Next we have mo, minutes for informational purposes from Davis Martin Park Board meeting. Both the one in July and in August. And we have one from Indiana Department of Transportation to talk about lighting on I-69 and at several exits and I don't know if you read this, but all the ones, including the one here in Washington and up by Eleanor. So, we appreciate that lighting, cause it's a little
Yeah, it sure can't hurt anything.
A little dark.
Not at all.
Informational purposes as well as the last thing is, as we get every month. And you probably, if you read your emails this morning, you got this in the email this morning. Davis Community Hospital Finance Meeting last, last week, full board meeting tomorrow. This is the financials for informational purposes. And I know the bond payment is down now to seven, eight or something, so it's about to get, about to get it wiped out. And we're contingent liabilities, which is why you, we receive that. Also, you have your fund balance in there with all your balances by fund. Obviously, six of those funds are gonna take a hit here as soon as Jen gets this money transferred that we just approved. Any questions or comments, Mike?
On the airport, the money that we are spending there, we're gonna get some of that back. That, that will be, it's not guaranteed that we had to, I'll let you speak on that. I'm speaking out on my turn.
So, we have a potential for, if they reimburse us, have the money. Our over engineer, um, Nick is paying on top of it. But as soon as they can, that they can reimburse projects like this.
What happened was over the COVID period, all of the number of flights came down. And so it did hit that where, hey, we'll approve that, but then we became under those numbers and they're like, we're not approving that. That's why the airport's building it themselves. Once those numbers return or greater with the new numbers, then at that point they'll look at that and then We'll have that potential. Right, right.
It's not a guarantee.
Right.
It's not, also not.
Yeah. Yeah, they were, they, they kinda took us out over that, those two-year time period because there was no flights coming in and that. Okay. Just wanted to understand.
But the project has to be completed first?
No, it doesn't have to.
Yeah, so when, once it goes into the cycle, then, yeah, I, I know I sat in one of their meetings for CIPs just to see what the future was. And it was discussed then for future reimbursement, depending on available funds.
Not less than at the top, if that makes sense. See, if you have to focus on five, five to 10 year program.
Right.
And thirty at eleven at the top and
Any, any idea on what numbers are a possibility to apply for?
For the vote, huh? Well, minus the five percent that they are
Right, so the rest of it would be potentially.
That's how that and the airport takes in five and that takes in and the rest.
Fifteen percent.
That'd be a win-win.
I knew there was some possibility, I just couldn't remember how it worked. Yeah. Keep our fingers crossed, yeah.
Keep poking Nick.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I think they've been doing that to this project.
Just depends on how hard we wanna job.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay, I ask everybody here if you had any additional questions, anybody in the audience, any questions, comments? None anywhere? Then I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Matt.
Second.
Second by Mike. Oh, Sprinkle. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Lots of things assigned, don't run away.
Erica?